I'm gonna get it started. Um, it's four oh one. Today we're meeting uh the third at for maintenance and development um having to do with internet. Uh we'll first introduce everyone, just say hi uh just for the record um. I see it. We'll we'll start with the with the counselors and then we'll go around.
Oh, hi everyone. I'm counselor Perez and I'm part of the maintenance development committee.
Hi everybody, Jose Delgado, city counselor. I am not part of the subcommittee. Happy to be here.
Uh Chris? I am not a city counselor yet. Uh Chris Signal, ADPW director for the city.
Alright, I see Benjamin.
Yes, Ben Madden with Go Net Speed as permitting coordinator.
And Nathan?
Hello, uh Nathan Trask, senior manager outside planning engineering for Go Net Speed.
Okay, um and is there anyone I'm missing? I see us. Let's say another Chris.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Brooks, uh senior director of operations with Go Net Speed and really appreciate everyone's time today and uh you allowing us to be a part of this.
And I see a Nathan?
I think Nathan introduced himself. We're up to Joe Teed.
I think Joe Teed, yeah. Nate already introduced himself.
And JT, okay. So, thank everyone. Thank you guys all for being here. Um, basically, uh this is something I know counselor Delgado um has been working with. Uh, he's been keeping me in the loop. Uh, so what I'll do, I kind of um, since he he's been kind of uh bringing all of this stuff to the forefront, I'm gonna defer um to counselor Delgado and let him um continue with uh his concerns and uh take it over from from right now. Counselor Delgado?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Perez. Uh, so we have in front of us Go Net Speed. Um, where I guess maybe Chris, you should really talk about the high level of why they're here and then I can kind of go deeper into some of my concerns.
Sure, the um, the overall uh process that Go Net Speed is going through uh probably from a timing standpoint um uh came about at the same time that the city was involved in a um uh, I'm sure I get my uh a digital equity analysis uh that was being performed by the PVPC for the city of Springfield. Uh, that work was completed really at the beginning of this year. Uh, however, we were in the middle of it of last year, so uh it kind of goes into the uh inequities that this that various citizens in the city face with regard to connection to internet. Uh, even though in the city, uh I'm gonna say we're at ninety-nine percent connectivity, uh the issue became pricing uh and basically one vendor being Comcast. Um, uh, no other vendors in the city provide it. I think T-Mobile does, and I think Verizon does for a very, very, very small section of the city. So when this report was coming through and we were looking at uh what the city's reaction or next steps were gonna be at the same time Go Net Speed uh approached the city and we had a meeting uh when I say we uh uh DPW and IT met with them, I believe it was back in March. Uh, and I think very coincidentally, the day that we met them was the same day that the final report came from the PVPC uh on that. So Go Net Speed is trying to install and has been installing fiber throughout the city. Uh, and I believe, I'm not sure from a customer standpoint, uh how many of them are under contract, but I know in a certain section of the city, Indian Orchard, uh connectivity has already happened uh and will be moving around the city uh to get as many folks as possible connected uh over the next year or two. Uh, but uh it coming in front of the city council, uh applications were made uh for underground construction work uh which obviously triggers the review and approval of the Springfield City Council. Uh, so therefore, I believe they first came in front of the council in June and then came again in July. Uh, their applications, which I think are twenty-seven of them, from a DPW perspective, what they're proposing to do from a construction standpoint underground is no big deal whatsoever. Uh, I have no concerns over over what they're proposing. Uh, basically, they're connecting small sections. When I say small sections, we're talking two, three, four hundred feet of uh and I inch and a quarter conduit, I think it is. So we're talking very, very small uh conduit systems that are going in the ground. So from a construction standpoint, I don't have any uh issues with the construction itself. The issue that came up was if Go Net Speed is coming into the city of Springfield, what are we looking at for connectivity throughout the city? Uh, and when we met with them in March, uh, they gave us their initial uh mapping uh that showed where they were gonna go, which was shared with everybody. And I know I've had a couple or three meetings with Go Net Speed and uh in the packet that they provided today uh has uh some additional build out of phases, for lack of a better term. Uh, but from a city perspective, we were obviously interested in looking at uh not just above groundwork, but also below groundwork and being able to connect into the city, uh connect into uh other areas of the city where above ground might not be possible at this point. When that can be happening, uh from a cost standpoint in the information that was presented to the city a few years or excuse me, back in March, we are talking about uh service to residents that is just on a um uh fiber internet standpoint to be significantly cheaper from to Comcast. Also, the issue with Comcast, their material that we're dealing with in the city is forty-five years old. It is very minimal, minimal fiber in the city. It is all uh dual coax. Uh, so connection speeds and download speeds uh are much, much lower than are advertised with them. So the uh uh idea of Go Net Speed coming in, bringing, I'm gonna use the word pure fiber uh because ever, or excuse me, Comcast does say that they're using fiber when they're not really using fiber. Uh, the costs are less for residents to be able to connect into, and there's a number of options to be able to do that. Uh, I don't know how many uh from uh Go Net Speed standpoint, I know I've received mailers. I know a lot of other people have received mailers uh to be able to sign up for the service uh for that, and I know a lot of people already have. Uh, so residents have been contacted at least over the last four or five months about the availability as we're moving forward in the city. Uh, but the real issue that we ran into was obviously on the heels of the digital equity plan uh that was put together by the PVPC and uh trying to work with Go Net Speed on doing a build out, a full build out for the city, uh which is basically where we got to where we are today. But just from a construction standpoint, I did want to state that what they are proposing from a construction standpoint is from the DPW's perspective, my perspective, not a big deal. Uh, nothing out of the ordinary that we deal with with uh uh Eversource or any of the other utilities that we deal with throughout the city.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and I I'm gonna still uh turn it back over to my colleague. I see counselor Davia. But I still wanted to real quick before I do that, I know a lot of our concerns had to do with um still making sure that it's fair. Um. What was that?
Mr. Chair, it's uh it's Jose. I wanted to uh make sure I uh Chris did a really great job. He went more in depth than I thought he was gonna go, but I wanted to make sure that I I kind of give my concerns as well uh with the process.
And could I be also documented as well for some concerns that I have on this counselor?
Yes, what what we'll do, uh Chris, um, I'm gonna turn it back over to counselor uh Delgado and then uh counselor Perez. Counselor Delgado?
Yes, um, and I wanna make sure I recognize my colleagues who joined us, uh counselor Victor Davila, counselor Katie Walsh, and I thought I saw counselor LeVar Clay Bruce.
Tim Allen.
Uh, is Tim Allen on as well? I can't see Tim, but um, but anyway, so Chris did a really great job explaining a high level of what Go Net Speed is coming here to do. Um, so as he mentioned, we've done a lot of work on the digital equity working group. I see Mr. Stephen Howard, who is on, who's been a a big fighter and champion to making sure that we have accessibility, affordability and 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 the educational components to making sure that our folks are connected to to the internet in general. Um, one of those components in the report is obviously we want fiber in here. And as Chris mentioned, fiber is competent, it brings a faster, I wanna say newer, but faster, newer uh technology to the city of Springfield that can compete with Comcast, that can hopefully um lower prices for residents. My my issue was uh when Go Net Speed came in, I don't have an issue with Go Net Speed at all. You know, I've looked up their company, but my issue is when they came to the city, they were looking to build out um certain sections of city of the uh higher median income levels. And my question to them was, what is your um I guess, what is your long-term plan for the build out for the rest of the city? Yeah, because my concern was that on the heels of the digital equity plan that we were going to exacerbate uh the equity concerns and only building out in places, East Forest Parks and Sixteen Acres and stopping there because there's nothing that says that any of these companies that come into the city of Springfield have to build out the whole city. So what that does is when you build out the city, right, and you put your your claim on a on an area, other companies will not look at us who build out the rest of the city because they also need those those areas. And so I've pushed back on Go Net Speed, and so they're here today uh to talk about uh some of the things they've done to update, I guess, their their report and kind of explain where they're at uh with the concerns that I've had, I think uh some other uh counselors had, and ensuring that, you know, we don't leave any neighborhood behind, especially when you build out these poles. No other companies are gonna wanna look at these poles once the higher median income areas um are taken up. So um, I'll leave it at that. I might have more for later on. I I will say the other piece throughout this that I did call on the city to do an RFP process because of that concern that I had. I had said that the city should do an RFP process similar to what we did for the casinos to say, well, if we're not gonna get a commitment to build the whole city, then I wanna see who is willing to work with the city to build out the whole city to make sure that all of our neighborhoods have connectivity over a certain time period. And so with that, I'll leave it there and now I'll hand it over to the the folks from Go Net Speed.
Alright, thank you, counselor. Um, Go Net Speed, if you guys can um address the concerns?
Yes, hi. Uh, my name is John Delahan. I'm uh government affairs of Go Net Speed. Uh, so we're here in person. We have a slideshow. We like to show everyone to kind of walk through some of those concerns. I know some folks have seen it already. This has been an updated version of that to show um some of the method levels that we've made recently uh and to give a more background on Go Net Speed in general. Who we are as a company, because I know there were some questions at the last city council meeting, just general questions about who we are as a company. So hopefully this addresses a lot of those. Everyone can see the slideshow.
How long is the slideshow?
Uh, only about three or four hours. No, it's it'll be ten minutes. It won't be long. I'll go through the slides that not gonna be labor slides that, you know, don't really address the open questions. I'll just make sure everyone is aware of us as a company and kind of breeze through the ones that we can go past quickly.
Okay, cuz I think our main concern pretty much, we know you're a credible company. We're just kind of concerned as far as the service. Where are you gonna provide the services really?
Yep, and that's in here. I have a map we can walk through and talk through. Uh, we'll just kind of cut right to it. So Ben, if you don't mind, move into the next slide. Um, I'll just give a brief brief overview. We are uh one of the largest privately owned fiber companies in the northeast. We have a presence in nine states right now. Um, if you can move to the next slide, Ben. So currently, we pass over six hundred and twenty-five units that just or dwellings right across our footprint. Uh, this gives a depiction of where we are predominantly in the northeast. As you can see, all the uh highlighted states is where we currently provide service. Uh, we have two more coming, Rhode Island and New Jersey. Um, and we're soon, we're sort of in the process of right now, the pre-construction phase to get those going. Um, we have local presence. As you can see, this is Agawam in Massachusetts, so that's nearby. Those are our walk-in centers, our dispatch centers. We have so folks can come in and deal with equipment issues or billing or other matters they wanna address in person. And so we do have a local presence when we build out in the in the community. So now we'll get into a little bit more of the investment. Um, so this is what we're committed to in Springfield, and this you'll see in the next slide. We don't go there yet, Ben, but speaks to uh the areas of the city we're gonna build out to, just more color on exactly where how that'll unfold. So this uh these numbers show you that we are looking to pass sixty thousand locations, and that's a commitment of fifty-four million dollars of our own uh money. That equates to four hundred and twenty-eight miles of fiber. The project start date, we already started is is uh Mr. Signal mentioned, we have active customers already. Um, service, we say TBD because the entire city is, it's still a rollout phase as of now.
Okay, um, where I where I'd like to uh just briefly touch right there.
Sure.
Um, I know as far as uh my colleagues, what does that get us as far as the area of service when you're considering, say, the inner city where Mason Square is and the different uh areas? How much does that get for us?
Do the next slide, please. So here's a depiction of where our build phase, right? So I think initially we committed, said we have, which we usually do with any community, we have a phased approach. Phase one, phase two, and this is just giving more um sort of in-depth view of how those phases will roll out and where exactly they'll be. So as you can see on the map, the green and blue are either fiber available today, which is the green. The blue is under construction currently right now. Uh, phase two, as you can see, is the red area. That is, this is said phase two. Phase three is the yellow. Phase four is the purple. And the gray area is what we usually leave, which is underground, commercial uh MDU situations, which typically we go to the most uh complicated builds, so we kind of.
If uh i- i- if I may.
Sure.
Um, these actual slides, they have no statistical values um to me or to counselors. We don't know what we're looking at. So when I look at blue, yellow, green, is that on State Street? Is that covering Indian Orchard? Is that, how do how do we know where that stuff is?
This covers every ward in Springfield, right? So the gray, as you can see, even though they're different colors.
Okay.
The last phase, which as you can see, when you put all the colors together, it's all of the wards, all of the area of Springfield.
Now, if I may, just jump in, please. So I think we did a pretty poor job explaining to to all you folks back when we first, when we first started uh having these conversations. And we, our first slide showed um our initial build of eighteen thousand homes, and that threw up a lot of red flags for everybody saying, you know what? Why are you only going to this area? And
Yeah.
In fact, we weren't, our our intentions were never to stop there. Our our intentions when we go into any city, when we do any any large projects like this, is a phased approach like John mentioned. And phase one um just happened to fall into Indian Orchard. Some might argue that's the the wealthier area of the city. And in full transparency, yeah, because on on the previous slide, it mentioned fifty-four million dollar investment. So we're 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 paying for this all on our own, out of our pocket, and we look to do aerial, the most dense locations, and um the the most populated areas where aerial is is an option, so we can start gaining um return on our investment. But I guess, as I mentioned, our intentions were to never stop with that first green section. That was just phase one. And we would we would continue to progress across the city um and not necessarily. So we have these marked as as phase two, three, four. They could definitely fluctuate depending on um the way our poll applications come back from Eversource, right? So we have, we have our applications in. They're being engineered by Eversource and Verizon, making sure there's room on the polls. Uh, we're doing the that make-ready work. We're in process to spread our whole network across the city. It's just, we're not there yet. And it it's gonna take some time and a lot of money, but our intentions are to build out the city. So to answer your original question, how many homes is this? It's all of them.
Through the chair.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, this this counselor Delgado, thank you, Chris, uh for explaining that. I appreciated uh meeting Chris recently at a community event that they were um in the Indian Orchard neighborhood. That was one of the first flags for me was the initial map that we saw was the green, and I think what you are coming for us for permits is the blue. Um, and that was it. So the red, yellow, and purple were not existent the first time we saw the map. And since, you know, I've been pushing back, I've noticed that this has been added, or this is something that now you're you 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 weren't showing originally. So I appreciate the progress um on on that piece. If I could ask, how, what percentage of all the colors together, what percentage of households is that of the city of Springfield?
Everything that falls within the the, it'll be one hundred percent that falls within the public right of way. If there's some large MDUs or um private, private areas, um HOAs, anything where it's not in the public right of way, we need to get that written permission from the property owners to then access those areas. But everything that falls within the public right of way, it would be, it would be everything.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, counselor Perez.
Yeah, I think one of my concerns back in July when we had the meeting was the mapping itself and the the timeframe of to know this. But not having a a timeframe for the other inner sides of the city. Um, I hear that you guys went nowhere because of the uh population. But then when my constituents were asking, like at the ward that I represent, I got a lot of high rises out there and all that. And it's one of the most difficult when it comes to uh if not in the city when it comes to all this technology. Um, and I was um charged to ask those questions. Uh, I represent the forests of the state and it seems um I'm gonna be a conspiracy here that always is the last. So then my other concern was, you are going with this project. How long does it take, give and take, for the other for the other um sides of the city to be serviced with the same technology that uh you are presenting right now? And those are the concerns that I had.
Sure.
Right.
Do you want me to take that or is that?
Net Speed, go ahead.
Yeah, I can jump in on that. And timing, so we've been working on Springfield for multiple years now. So I'm sure you folks know, but I'm gonna I'm gonna say it anyways. The way that we have to go about to get on the polls, um, the polls are owned by Eversource and by and jointly owned by Verizon. So there is a very long and tedious um application process for us to get on the polls. And then after that is the engineering work that both entities have to perform, and then it's what's called make-ready. So we actually have to go out or they, excuse me, they have to go out and whether it be replace polls or just move existing attachments to make room for our new attachment. That's what takes the longest part of the time. For us to actually build the fiber, it's it's liquidly split. We do, we build the fiber and it's just getting to that point. Getting the the pole owners um to allow allow our attachment and make room. And and you may or may not uh be aware of this, we've we've actually been um lobbying very hard at um the State House in trying to get get an audience, and we've had an audience with the governor and and her staff, in trying to just put reg rules and regulations in place in the state that allows uh telecommunications providers an easier path to get on the polls because today, it's it's really at the discretion of the the pole owners, and in this instance, it's Eversource and Verizon. And I wish I could say we'd have everything done in a year, but I don't believe that to be true because it's it that that part is really out of our control.
Yeah, and just to make one more point on that that legislation that we're trying to push is the one-touch make-ready, which so we may have heard of. Um, New England, or excuse me, Massachusetts is the only state in New England that does not, has not adopted that that approach and that protocol, which to Chris's point, you know, can take, make long, long lead times to, if there's a pole replacement, you know, you have the double wood scenario, you have those scenarios, right? So in the city, that's problematic. Everywhere it's problematic, but that's the legislation we're trying to push is the one-touch make-ready.
Thank you. Uh, I see any of my colleagues. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I do.
Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, thank you. So listening to you talking about Eversource and uh do they not wanna grant you the permission? Is that an issue?
It's not that they don't want to. That's just not their biggest priority. Their biggest priority is providing um energy services. So third-party attachments always falls to the bottom of the barrel.
Thank you. I I think you've addressed some of the good reasons why we've sent it to committee.
And and one of the, one of the items I would like to add, counselor Walsh and to everybody else, throughout the city, Eversource um Eversource primarily is doing the pole replacement. They're doing a significant amount of pole replacement to make poles higher because in a lot of areas of the city, getting any other third party in there is almost impossible. Uh, there, you know, you see them around the city putting up poles everywhere. And they started with this probably about a year ago, uh moving all over the place. And somebody just mentioned the double pole. Uh, I I live off of Dwight Road, and they did that a year ago, and there's still a significant amount of double poles out there because there are a ton of third-party things out there uh that other utility companies have to come and move. Uh, so that utility companies such as Go Net Speed can attach. Uh, Eversource, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the word, has been cooperative. Uh, however, they are also doing a significant amount of expansion on their pole systems uh throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any other counselors?
I see uh.
Counselor Davia?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good afternoon to everybody. I'm Doug Golden. Thank you for being here, giving some an overview and and explanation of what uh what intent is. Uh, before I ask the question, let me say it. Um, just going from the premise, uh, we do need competition here in the city, and I think uh you coming into the city will be um welcome sight. Uh, with that being said, um, first, let me ask you, you actually got a contacted by a constituent who was concerned of any impact this may or may not have on the tree belts. I believe that the application says that it's gonna go through the tree barrels to install these fibers. Is that correct? That's uh that's to go now, Mr. Chair.
Go Net Speed, can you answer that?
Yes, this is gonna be field side, right?
Yeah, it's either, depending upon where it is, it's either gonna be tree belt road, depending upon where, what's out there. Yeah. I'm I'm sorry, uh, counselor Davia, we were just talking. Based upon their applications that I have, certain areas will be in the roadway, certain areas will be in tree belts. Uh, and that's the same sort of thing that we deal with with Eversource when they're putting in conduit systems. It's gonna be what the available corridor is in that particular area.
Uh, correct. No, I'm addressing constituent's uh concern. I did promise that I was gonna bring it up to him. But can you walk me so that I can go back and, you know, tell him what uh what it is? I know that Eversource does. uh, what it is? I know that ever so does the same thing, but what does that look like in terms of uh, digging up the ground, putting it back together? Uh, any, are we taking it down in the trees? I mean, or is that just a simple hole and, or ditch and put the cable through?
Uh, from, from the, from the DPW's perspective councillor, they're putting in a, uh, I think the biggest one that they're proposing is a two inch line. Most of the stuff is an inch and a quarter. Uh, so you're dealing with the installation of conduit that is, I'm gonna say similar size to putting in a uh, irrigation system throughout the city and from pole location to pole location where they're going underground. Uh, when they come in for the actual permit to the DPW, we work for that with them to determine which location, for example, as you said, no, we're not gonna let them cut a tree down just to put a one inch conduit in. We'll find another method to get from point A to point B.
Okay, and uh, um, Gordon, is there anything you want to add to that explanation?
Well, I was sad that we do restore, uh, you know, if we dig up any area, it's like any other company, we would restore it to its original. Uh, you know, how it was originally viewed or seen before we started construction. So the restoration efforts will be there as well.
Yeah, and additionally, with the trees, we definitely take that into consideration. So um, when there's, when there's a bunch of trees uh, within a neighborhood and we need to go underground, we use uh, directional boring. So we'll be able, I don't wanna guarantee anything, but we can go below the root system and and not disturb it. So there would be very minimal disruption to the landscape. There'd be an opening pit and a receiving pit and then everything would be uh, directionally drilled uh, in between.
Understood. Okay. All right. Thank you. So thank you for that. Uh, I'm sorry, anybody else wants to?
No.
Uh, I just thought if I may, Mister Chair, um.
Excuse me, do we need a screen share?
Would we, with regards to?
More slides, so that, that's why they still have the screen share.
Um.
I, I just have one.
I really.
Mister Chair.
Uh, I, 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 um, I think as far as uh, the slide, if we could take it down for now, I don't think any, I, it, a lot of our concerns is.
Oh, thank you.
So if we could just take it down unless another councillor wants to use it for a point of information. Um, go ahead, Councillor Dalvia.
Thank you. Uh, so uh, going back to Golden, uh, addressing some of the concerns that Councillor God brought up, um, uh, at least let me, let me start by the premise I'm saying that I have learned to hear my time in the city council. Uh, we are promised the moon and then we get the fuzzy end of the lollipop. Uh, and so uh, well, so you guys know probably better than us, nowadays, internet has become a necessity. Uh, and not only a necessity, but good reliable internet service. Uh, with that being said, the, I see your explanation, your explanation makes sense to me from economic standpoint. I get it. However, we need to look at the whole picture here for our constituents. Um, what can you do at all to sort of ease our concerns other than a promise kind of, uh, I know you guys said your intent is not to stop here. But what kind of concrete things can you done, do right now to help ease up fears that this is not going to be expanded through the whole city? Uh, and I asked that question with a lot of uh, 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 what's the word, diligence? Uh, is there anything, any neighborhood uh, that is not within that um, footprint that you could possibly attach to, so to sort of show a good faith there for?
So as I, as I mentioned previously, um, we've already started our, our, our poll applications. And I guess our commitment is the money that we've invested thus far just to expand into these other areas where uh, every one of the poles that's being replaced, we pay for. Uh, we don't do the work, but we're paying ever source for it. Uh, everything that, that we do just to apply to ever source and Verizon, we're paying for it. We pay for it all upfront. So I guess that's where our commitment is, is because we've invested, we've invested our funds um, on this expansion. So can I, can I tangibly show you? I guess the only thing I could show you would be a return check, you know, like that, that ever source cash for us. Um, but that's where our commitment level is, um, we're with our expansion.
But Mister Chair, just to be clear for me.
Yeah, go ahead, Councillor.
Hey, when you say pole, are you talking, you're not talking about a light pole? You're talking about a utility pole in which cables are gonna go through?
Yep, all the utility poles that, that uh, Chris mentioned that are being replaced in the double wood out there, we've paid for all those.
Wait, but I'm not, I'm not Victor the electrician here or, or the fiber guy, but just to be, I wanna be crystal clear. You're not in for light poles?
No.
Okay, so it's gonna be just utility poles? Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, we're attaching to the existing and then the newly placed utility poles along the street side.
Gotcha. Uh, all right. Thank you so much. Sure. There's other questions.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to elaborate on one other thing. You, you actually have something very close to my heart. It is, for me, this is far and beyond just making money for the company. I, I, I was in this industry through the COVID pandemic and I sat in people's living rooms where their children were trying to study and trying to do homeschooling because the, the schools were shut down. And when I watched somebody not be able to connect, when a student wanted to learn and they truly wanted to get online just so they could do their schoolwork, that, that was the driving force for me. So it's no, I'm in upstate New York and in a very small little community. I can only imagine how large of a, an impact it has on a large city like Springfield. So this is far and beyond uh, just us making some money for GoNet Speed. It's making a true impact on, on the people that are our future. So it, it's extremely important to me personally.
All right. Thank you, Chris, and thank you for investing.
Thank you, Councillor. Now, Chris, I had a quick question. Um, signally. Is the city benefiting, um, uh, is ever source being taxed on any of that from the city?
They pay a yearly tax uh, to the city based upon uh, all the utility poles that they have in the city. So, you know, and, and I'm not sure about the uh, you know, if they're going to bigger polls, if there's a bigger tax or not. I'm not sure of how the uh, the assessment works on that, but they, they pay and I, nobody hold me to this, but I wanna say it's like uh, uh, al- almost eighteen to twenty million dollars they pay in tax.
Yeah, see, what I, what, but what I mean, Chris, is so say they spend eighteen million in taxes. But what if they, so that's just a flat rate. So that's that one pole, right? But then they, they sell, say, five people um, usage on that pole. So say, uh, this internet company, they will have to pay to run it. Why isn't the city getting any taxes off of that? The amount, not just the actual uh, one unit. If that one unit is you, being used by three different entities, I believe the city should be able to have a piece of all three entities. So given a flat rate, um, isn't constructive if I'm sitting there, I give you a flat rate for a hundred dollars. But then I sell that same area to three different people and I make a million dollars. Is there a way where we can get taxes off of uh, new, new uh, clients? We're not getting any of that?
I, I did tell you, Councillor, I just don't know. Uh, that would be something for, uh, probably, uh, I'm gonna say Pat Greenall, but uh, somebody in the assessor's office, cuz I am not familiar with how the assessment rate works for the utility poles, uh, whether there's a higher rate, if there's more utilities, et cetera. I'm just not familiar with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other councillors?
Yes, I just wanna make this, you know, I, thank you, uh, Councillor. I would have wished that we had created a balance when it was economically slash demographically. Uh, I know you have invested so much in the community, but as, as councillors, city councillors, uh, we get back, we on the frontline, people coming to us and, and, and asking why is all this? I look at the addresses that you are gonna be installing it and it's only in one population only. Um, you know, for transparency, I wish that would have happened and from the beginning, I've been very vocal about that matter. Um, and I know we are here to, to invest and make money, but uh, from the demographic and economic point of view, we should like create a balance. That's why I have to echo what my colleague that God was saying and looking at type of process RFP. So then we could understand more the process and come to the table and negotiate. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Councillor. Um, any other councillors?
Uh, I have questions, but I'll save it for then. I know GoNet Speed still has some slides they wanted you to, yeah, I, I see.
I'm all, I'm all, I'm all good with that slideshow. Go ahead, Councillor.
I would like to just say to, to piggyback on the commitment uh, question from the earlier councillor, I just wanted that we're in the slides, but we're not gonna show, but I do want to say verbally aloud so everyone hears it is further to our commitment is um, we are committing to free connections at any library um, for three years that is on our network, which will be, you know, eventually that will be a cascading thing, right? As it rolls out. Uh, we're also committing to discounted service, thirty percent discount for municipal buildings. Um, we're also, something that I saw in the digital equity plan um, that we're responding to is, is digital literacy classes, right? For seniors and others, we're going to host free digital literacy cr- classes at senior centers and nonprofit um, organizations to help residents transition from the traditional comp desk cable paradigm over to streaming internet only. So those are just more things that we're committed to do, working with the city to kind of make sure we know where to go and where the best place is to start.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll turn this over to uh, Councillor Delgado. Uh, I know he has some concerns and issues. Uh, Councillor.
Thank you. I mean, I, I've, I've let out the, most of the issues earlier, Mister Chair. Uh, but I do wanna say thank you to GoNet Speed for coming here and, and being patient with us. Um, for me, when I asked the question originally about building out the whole city, I didn't get a commitment. And so when I didn't get a commitment, um, I didn't see the need to, to move forward and that, and that's, again, for me, it's protecting the residents of the city of Springfield. I see this investment and I wanna say that this is a, a big investment that they're, that they're making into the city of Springfield and we appreciate that. You know, like I mentioned earlier, my only, my only concern was to make sure that we get the best product for our residents for the city. And understanding what I've learned is the first one that comes in to the city pretty much has that. I don't have a analogy, but you, you got the keys to the castle essentially, right? And once we let that go, that's it. And I know, I appreciate the fact that you guys have redone the maps to show potential future phases. But I guess my question for you guys is, uh, one, what does it take? Because you did say this can change plus or minus. What will it take for you to get to the next phases? I know there's a take rate that you guys have to, have to hit, right? It's a business. You have to make money to be able to then build out other areas. So I guess I'm curious to know what is, if you're even able to say what the take rate is, is what is, what is it that you need? What benchmarks you need to hit to get to the next level to ensure that we see the, the purples, the yellows and the reds coming on?
Yeah, and I'll just say that I don't know, the benchmark is really how fast can we get the poll applications since we have the money. We, you know, obviously return on investment is a big thing, but it's also, we did a press release a little while ago. We're committed to two hundred fifty million to Massachusetts and a whole fifty million of that is Springfield specifically. So we're committed, we're, we have the funding, we have the money, the real holdup and as Chris said earlier is we're dependent on a, a utility company. If they all of a sudden give us a, a series of permits in one area, then the, the phase might shift, right? From what we see as two to, you know, to four or whatever it may be. We're so contingent on that, getting that make ready feedback and the surveys, we're ready to go after that from a monetary perspective and a, a manpower perspective.
How long will it take you to build out, I guess, this green and blue, once you get whatever permit or what occasions you need?
My understanding is we have about ten thousand folks sort of ready to go in within days. Um, but beyond that, I think if anyone else can speak to how many are in the red, or excuse me, the green and blue, but I know right now in the green, five thousand active, ten thousand waiting, and I know there's more, you know, within that color code, but I don't know exactly.
I'll chime in there. Uh, good afternoon. I'm Joe T, the Director of Construction. So Ray's my manager, the gentleman in front of you, along with John. So how soon will it take in those areas? We already built out a significant portion of that area with the anticipation of these permits to come in. So they are literally, a lot of these areas are literally waiting for this underground to connect the dots and to be able to uh, give service to these uh, your consist, your constituents, you know, the residents of Springfield. So, you know, we're continuing every day actively building. As soon as a poll application comes in from ever source or Verizon, literally, the moment that it comes in and it gets emailed to our permitting team, the permitting team sends it to Ray and we have a construction crew out there sometimes that week, if not, it'll be the following week and we are actively building. So there is literally no wasted time. We are, and, and to go a little bit further, if all of a sudden the floodgates opened as an example, with uh, ever source just flooding us with applications and we're finally be, being able to, you know, hit things hard. We have our contracting partners that are on standby that will allocate resources to us to continue to build faster and faster. So, um, you know, the commitment to you folks is not only our money, which Chris Brooks has mentioned, um, we've actively paid already how much, but I will say millions of dollars just to literally apply for all of these poles in anticipation to build um, in the areas that, you know, in, within the phases. Cuz the sooner we get the poll applications in, sooner the clock starts ticking. So I hope that helps answer your question, but you know, we are literally waiting. No pressure, but you know, for you guys, crew folks to, you know, assist us in approving these permits so we can get your, your residents the service.
Now, it, it somewhat answers the question. I mean, I think for me was just build out timelines. When we talk to construction companies and they're talking about a building or something, they're gonna tell us this construction is gonna take eighteen to twenty-six months. Uh, but no, I guess the only other thing is that I have on my mind was the fifty-four million dollar investment number, is that incorporate the entire city or is that, what does that incorporate?
Yeah, that's the build out of the city.
And the reason I ask that question is because I've heard different numbers from different groups of what it would take to build out the city and the numbers that I've seen are, are more than that. So either you guys are the best at what you do in building it out or there's something that I don't know, uh, because I've seen numbers from a hundred million plus. So I guess I was just curious to understand that number.
Just for phase one.
What's that?
Fifty-four million is phase one.
Fifty-four million is, is just phase one?
Yeah.
Okay. And phase one is, is the green and blue?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's the committed investment right now is the green and blue. And then the red are the hope to do next?
Yes, well, yeah, as it phases, the next two, three, three, two, whatever the phase may be, yes, those, today, those are the next phases.
All right. So thank you for that correction on, on the fifty-four million, cuz that, that number threw me off a little bit. Um, so I guess I just wanna hear, so is GoNet Speed committed to building out the city of Springfield and working with us?
Yes.
All right.
Um, thank you, Councillor. Now, I had um, a question for Chris. Is Chris still in there?
I'm here.
Okay, Chris. What is the, is there any, I don't think, like, what, what, what? So seeing ever source and say with, with this, with this entity, um, ever source needs us for these polls and things like that. Is there a way that we can liaison and meet or is it beyond our purview to be able to meet with ever source? Um, and allowing um, internet access to be able to be put up faster in a timely manner? If they'll allow some of the polls. If they'll allow some of the polls, is there a way we can lobby for that stuff?
I I've already started that with uh with Eversource because the uh, the. The poll replacements that they're doing uh do not trigger the Board of Public Works because they're doing an in-kind replacement. So I've been working with them, trying to get, you know, in number one, in coordination with what is being proposed here. But they needed to do a lot of build out regardless of whether there was going to be any third party work. Certain areas of the city, their poll systems were just in horrible condition. So we've been working with them. I've been working with them over the last six or eight months to make sure that. The application process is moving forward, uh, you know, that they're not holding up anything and. And I haven't seen anything, I I I guess the best word is I haven't seen anything out of the normal that's causing me concern that. Uh, uh, is an issue. We're dealing, we're doing some fiber on our own for the city. Uh, and I'm dealing with Verizon because we're using their underground conduit system, because legally we can. And it's taken us eight to ten months to get approvals from them on certain things uh on that. So this is just a, uh, I guess the best word is painful when it comes to a schedule process.
Well, why I ask is because I've um done a lot of budgets, I've done billions of budgeting and forecasting. So when you're saying um as a entity, um GoNet, um. Those are still things you should be able to forecast, um, say monthly, quarterly. Um, how many, how many you've actually, just as far as historical data? How many have you been able to put up? Um, Chris, you know, saying, okay, with Eversource. We know just forecasting Eversource will be able to allow them just on historical data to do like. Say twenty-five polls a month, um, and can we get it to thirty polls? Um, there isn't, there there isn't, there isn't no number. There isn't no data. I'm one hundred percent sure. There's not guesswork when you're doing these things. So as far as like uh Eversource, um. They have a certain number in mind. They have a certain pace that they've been going at, um. As far as the, what you guys have already have as far as your historical data. You know how long it's been taking for them to release the polls and everything like that. So you're saying is definitely not going to take, is going to be longer than a year based on what what's been going on. As of right now, correct?
That's correct. And and you're absolutely right. There is data. Uh, the data is so bad based off of those those timelines that. That we've received from or what we've seen from Verizon and Eversource. This this project for the very minimal um number of homes that we've turned up to this date, it's in the years.
Yeah.
Through the poll application process, with literally years.
And I would, I would, I would, as a council body and a city, Chris, if we can, and I know Counselor Delgado, um. This would be something um in his committee. Someone, someone can mute, um, in his committee where. Um, I think we should try to streamline this, uh, and and get everyone on board. Uh, Chris, is this something we can help them with to streamline it a little faster? Because really all it is is us being able to maybe mediate between the two parties.
Yeah, I I get, I I'll continue to reach out to Eversource and uh try to try to get some better information from them as well. And see what the background is and I'll be able to do that. And then internal in the city, uh, you know, just putting our process together. That we're going to do because there, if they have all these applications in front of us. As we move forward over to next six, six, eight, twelve months, there's going to be a significant amount of applications coming in again as well. I would. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have, uh, um, but I would just still recommend. Um, I know my colleague Counselor Delgado, he'll probably pull everyone back um in a little bit. Um, to see if we can help. I know we want to help if we're going to do it and support it. Why ha- you know, based on what's been going on, we have a forecast of it not being done for like five years. If we can um help streamline it, we might be able to cut it in half. So, um. You know, I I think as a as as a city, we should at least help. Uh, but with that in mind, I'll 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 defer um to any, anything else to uh my colleagues have.
The the only other item that I wanted to add, Counselor Brown, to all the counselors. The applications that were on the agenda for July will be on the agenda for. September fifteenth. So all these items will be in front of the council. Uh, I have not spoken to Gladys. I don't know what the overall agenda looks like. I usually September is a pretty big agenda. So the, all the items that were tabled uh will be on the September fifteenth agenda.
Thank you, Chris. Um, any, anything else? Go ahead, Vic, Counselor Davio.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I took on that. Um, when is your expected uh shovel uh to ground date on this? Project?
Yesterday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
So you're ready to start the moment? If we approve this, you're ready to start immediately?
Yes.
Okay. And not to sound over 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 picky, but uh, when can we expect seeing the first results of competitions in the neighborhoods?
We have existing customers, though. So we've been installing folks. Um, so. Immediately, like, is there something specific you're looking for? Because.
No, 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 I just want to get a sense of the project, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we've we've been working through this for the past four to five years.
Okay.
We do have uh customers on our network today.
Okay, and just a clarified question, what's the total investment from you guys?
It's fifty-five million in the slides that we showed today. I'll just have to clarify. We heard that was phase one, so let me just get back to you and make sure that's.
Yeah, could you clarify that? Cause that gave, that gave me more pause when I, when I heard that.
Right. I I just want to make sure you say fifty-four, fifty-six? Million?
Fifty-five was for phase one and we're going to validate if that's the, you know, what the total number is for the entire project.
Okay, now I have to, I have to ask this question because that's a big project. I realize this is a private project, but uh, who's going to be doing this work?
So your folks or? Uh, Centerline is our contracting partner.
Who's this?
Uh, Centerline is our contracting partner.
Okay, I guess it's the same question I'm asking. Are we going to, is there room? I know this is probably special to work, but is there room for local people to be working on this project?
Yeah, I I I don't know. We'd have to look into that and just to get back to you and see if what. That's uh an option or not and what would that would look like?
I hear what you're saying and it probably makes sense from your standpoint, but also, uh, you know, it's a good project and it's a lot of money, um. Listen, if I can make cake and eat it too, I will. Uh, if we can have fiber optics and some people working locally. Uh, on this project, it will be a win-win for everybody, including you guys.
There'll certainly be sales and other folks that will be hired, right? We certainly hire, you know, hire a lot of folks at good wages. As soon as the the network is live, so you know, I can give you a little more uh detail on exactly what those folks.
Would you be able to have some sort of idea by September fifteen?
Yes.
That's going to be important to me to hear.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor David. Uh, any other, any of my other colleagues?
Uh, no, I I don't have any questions. I just wanted to highlight there were some community questions. Um, we already. Talked about the the phases piece, but um, John, if you could just really quickly reiterate the. Discounts you mentioned uh for seniors.
Yeah, so uh, just what I mentioned in terms of our commitment to uh the city on a whole was free connections. At um the libraries for three years that are on our network, which eventually will be all, but it's it's a rollout phase. Those are free connections for three years to all libraries. Um, we're giving discounted service to schools and municipal, municipal buildings of thirty percent discount. Uh, we are doing digital literacy classes or committed to do digital literacy classes for free. At senior centers and nonprofit centers to help residents transition from the cable paradigm to the new streaming platform. And we're going to continue to advance sponsorships like we did go to back to school just last month. Where we gave out backpacks, school supplies and that sort of thing with a local red cloth cross. So we'll continue to do those uh events in the community as well.
All right.
Now, when you, and and when you, when you guys, so with the seniors. Is there a way you could do thirty percent for the seniors? You're talking about entities that you're giving breaks for. So what happens is. I work, um, my full-time job is in the House of Representatives. So a lot of these organizations, they have the ability to submit for federal and state funding. Um, for programs that'll help them get funding for things like that. Um. Um, but where it comes, when you come to a regular senior constituent, they don't have those abilities. So is there, i- is there any way you guys can work in a certain break for the seniors? Well, just keep it in mind, like something.
Certainly keep in mind, I mean, I know you you may have heard of Lifeline before. That's not unique to us, but.
Yeah.
Program where you get a discount. We don't have sort of the back office staff to validate, you know, the sort of requirements needed. Um, to kind of have, you know, do the, are they on school lunch or that sort of thing? We don't have the staff to kind of go through all those nuances. But art pricing is very competitive, right? We come in looking to sell and it's much cheaper than. What you have in the marketplace today, but I hear what you're saying and we'll, you know, we'll take that under consideration.
Because I do know, I do know as far as there are certain uh programs. Where they get free laptops, they get, so I've seen even where we've had where you get free internet. You, the cable company has given people with low income, uh, I think it's uh twenty dollars or seven dollars for free. Um, internet when it comes low income and things like that. Are you, do do you guys look to uh submit for different federal and state funding to be able to do that stuff too?
We do, and that program was ACP, which was very prominent, um, you know, the last couple of years, but it's since. Unfortunately, been, has not been funded any longer. Um, so that was a program we were, like many others, promoting and. Been participating in, but uh the federal government has stopped that program or it is no longer funding it, I should say. So. Um, that option is not available, the the deep discount that you just spoke about, the twenty dollars.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all I had. Uh, any of my colleagues before?
Well, I I want to, Mr. Chair, I just want to say it's a great technology and. I am in full support of it, um, with the condition that we still um come back and we visit. And just and be on the map when it comes to the other areas of the city. That that will be my recommendation to the matter. Thank you so much.
That uh through the chair, um, I, that would be my one thing is I would appreciate the constant communication with GoNSB. To kind of keep, keep us up to date where we're at, what we can do to support initiatives. But also wanting to make sure that there's a a dual working relationship here. Because if we vote to approve this, you guys are the kings of the of the fiber. And I will say one fear I have is ten, twenty years on the road. You guys are the new monopoly. If nobody else comes in here, so I also want to have some questions around pricing and and what's the commitment around? Keeping prices at a certain air, at a certain level, I guess. And how long can you keep them down there? Um, because I've seen in other jurisdictions where they've promised uh municipalities that. They won't raise the prices on the residents, which I know that's hard with cost, cost of doing business co- constantly increases. Uh, but I want to make sure that this doesn't turn into, hey, we got you at this price and then later on. We're we're jumping up because we got you in and now you're stuck.
That we are, you will. Going conversation as much.
So I would love to have just continue updates um as the phases are going. Because I'm going to owe you to the yes, when you say you're committed to building out Springfield. And I don't, I don't want to come back two years from down the road and and hear different stories.
You're going to make me the bouncer, right?
You know where to find Chris.
I saw uh 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 Mr. Chair, Chris from GoNSB has his hand up.
Good.
I also have my hand.
Oh, sorry.
We'll go with, we'll go with uh Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say that I think uh the meeting today has really. Uh, put in perspective what you're doing for the city. I'm not uh on this committee, but I feel after listening to all of this today. I'd be happy to support it when it becomes before the full council.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chris?
In the meeting.
Chris, did you have?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Um, one thing that Counselor Delgado just mentioned. He wants an an open dialogue and that's, that's something that we really want as well. And and it's not just with Springfield, it's every single community that we go in. We want a very strong. Open door policy uh with with the elected officials, with the, with the people in the, the residents in the community. We're, we're very transparent. Uh, we want to be able to answer all your questions and and answer questions for uh the residents as well. So I'm hoping this is just another stepping stone to a very, very strong relationship that we have uh with the. The the City of Springfield. And you mentioned, if there's things that you can do um to help. One thing, I mean, as a, as a council, as as the the city. Just back and endorse the, the. One-touch make-ready legislation that we're trying to have passed, uh, that the governor's office is working on. That's, that's one huge thing and it'll help. It'll help the entire state. It's not just going to help uh Springfield. When those rules are put in place, it changes the game. It gives you the timelines that that you're, you're desperately asking for. Because we can meet every one of those, those deadlines because they're required by law. So that's one big thing that that would go a super long way. Um. Having, having the City of Springfield endorse that, that legislation.
And I would, uh, Chris, I would, uh, just get, get in touch with me, um, after this. Um, and I can help you guys later as far as the state, the state, the stuff over in the state house. Um, I work, I'm a chief of staff in the House of Rep, so.
Wonderful.
I'll, I'll, um, after this, we'll, you know, just give me, contact me afterwards.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, I, I had one quick question. I know um in in the, in the queue. How how much is your regular customer? How much is the going rate?
Uh, so our pricing is, what we have now, the speed is five hundred synchronous, so up and down, some upload, download, same with fiber. Um, so for five hundred megabits, it's sixty-four ninety-nine a month. One gig, just to give you a flavor of the tiers, one gig, which again, up and down seventy-four ninety-nine and two gigs. Is one oh four ninety-nine per month. And that includes the router. We don't charge for that. We. A lot of companies charge a rental fee. We do not. We give you the router. Installation is free as well. We don't charge for installation as well. Unless, of course, I don't think we run this scenario in the city. It's a long sort of corridor that's, you know, five hundred, six hundred feet down. But that's not uh typical of the city, so.
But it's not competitive. I pay forty dollars.
For what speed?
I'm a gamer, so I play on, I got, I got four game systems, a laptop and. That I'm a high-speed gamer, so it does everything that it needs to do. I don't know. And I'm paying forty dollars, so. I think everybody pay about forty dollars. So I'm thinking you guys are going to say twenty-five. So you say your cheapest price is like seventy dollars?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
In all seriousness, go to the website, um, plug your address in. The, the prices, we run promotions on a regular basis. Um, we feel the temperature of of the customers and we're making regular changes. Um, with with promotions and um different gift card giveaways and whatnot. So there's, things are always. Always.
Price matching. So what if I have Comcast and I want to come over to you guys and I'm paying forty? Do you guys pay, you guys chart, you guys going to charge me? Is forty going to be what it'll be?
Probably not, because you're not getting the same level of service.
Okay.
As well, because we've, you're not getting a symmetrical uh speed. As well, because we've, you're not getting a symmetrical, uh, speed.
Okay, I'm just curious. Um, I'm gonna, we're gonna end this up. I'll have Steve real quick before we end this. Go ahead, Steve. Real quick. Steve, I see your hand up, Howard.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, I was pulling over. Uh. That price. Is, uh, kind of ridiculous. Because, like, the councillor is saying, like, right now, I'm, I'm, I'm paying, uh, forty dollars myself. And I have everything on my phone that I need. Unlimited access, everything. Uh, I, when I used to go back and forth to New York, constant connectivity, I have worse connectivity problems. In the house when I'm here in Springfield than when I'm doing sixty-five on the highway. So, you know, that, that, that price to me. That's, that's, that's practically three times the amount of money that I'm paying right now, maybe more than that. So for me, I definitely wouldn't be interested in purchasing your services. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Chris, any response or you don't have to?
I'll gladly say sixty-four dollars is not triple the price of forty. Um. You're, you're also, you said you're getting poor signal in, in your home. It sounds like I have a, um. A, just a, uh, cellular carrier network that you're working off of. When you have a fiber connection in your home, you're gonna get a reliable upload and download speed that's, that's regular and constant.
Well, from what I was told, uh, my neighborhood, which is McKnight, they basically have, uh, have copper. So it's a matter of having to rewire certain areas.
Yeah, that's what you're looking to do now. So that's what they're looking to do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, so with that, um, unless any of my colleagues, we have anything?
No, no.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna end this. It's a great, great meeting. Uh, I definitely enjoyed clarifying. Uh, what you guys provide and what you do. Um, I do know this will probably be my, you guys probably my last, last time in my committee. Um, but I know in the future, you guys will be a councillor, uh, Delgados. Um, just to make sure, you know, we can help expedite, uh, making sure we can get it some of that time. Cut in half as far as being able to pro- provide some of the services. But, uh, with that, I, uh, wanna thank everyone for being here and, uh, everyone, uh, have a great day.
Thank you so much.
The, um, only thing I wanted to mention.